Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. It is Monday, May 17th, 2021. It is 7:05 PM. This is the regular meeting of this Asbury Park Planning Board. And Barbara, would you please call us to order?
Yes, to call the meeting to order. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Act 31, Public Law 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically adequate notice of the scene provided to the Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press in the city of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines of the virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. All microphones and public users are muted until a public question or comment period. If you'd like to speak during that time, please raise your hand using the button in Zoom if you're on a computer or dial *9 if you're on a telephone. Your last name or four digits of your phone number will be called when it's your turn. If at any time your questions are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public meeting session, only the public will have three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting and please identify yourself before you speak. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via APTV. Please join me in the salute of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one nation, and one government, one individual, with liberty, justice, and moral rights.
All right, and I will now take role. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry.
He's muted.
Yeah, I'm going to come back to Mr. Henry because he was having some difficulties. Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Trudy Seifax is absent. Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Gallapo.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
Barbara Krasak.
Here.
And let's try Jim Henry again. Mr. Henry, are you there? He was there a minute ago, but we'll move on.
Yeah, we can get, we can.
To the resolution.
Yes, we have a resolution. The amendment to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan. Does anybody have any concerns about the wording of it? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
I will make that motion.
Okay. I'll second it.
Sure.
All right, I have a motion by Eric Gallapo and a second by Barbara Krasak. And all, I'm sorry, all members of the Planning Board are eligible to vote. All members in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, resolution adopted. Okay, and let's see if we can get Mr. Henry again.
We can, if you want, Arina, we can get started. You want to give him a call?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'll give him a call and you guys can get started with the application.
All right, our application is 202 Seventh Avenue. That has come back to us. Want to get started with the presentation?
Sure. Mr. Kennedy.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, very good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Kevin Kennedy on behalf of the applicant. And I thank you for giving us this time tonight. Madam Chair, you'll recall, we were here last month's meeting and there was a request that we provide certain additional plan details. I respectfully submit that many of those supplemental details have been provided. The plans have been submitted and I spoke with Arina earlier in the week and we can mark them into the record. But just to cut to the chase, some of the more prominent changes that we've made, all the air conditioning condensers have been relocated from the ground to the roof. The ground floor lighting level plan has been recalculated so as to account for the board on board fence. The architectural plans and elevations have been revised so as to reflect the board on board fence, which will be stayed so as to match the exterior of the building. We provided details for the garage door opening warning system. We included details for the balcony cable guardrail system and bumper blocks. We've also had.
Just a second. Hi, Jim, I think you have two things that are on. Two devices that might be on.
Sorry, sorry about that, everyone.
Okay.
Um, I'm just going to take role again, if that's okay, to interrupt because Mr. Henry has joined us now. Okay, Mr. Henry, can you, let's, let's see if we can hear you. Can you unmute yourself, Mr. Henry?
Okay.
Okay, perfect, we got, we got it. All right, I will just take role really quickly. Mayor John Moore.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Trudy Seifax is absent. Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Gallapo.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Krasak.
Here.
Thank you, everyone is present.
And, and good evening, Mr. Henry. Just I'll recap. My name is Kevin Kennedy and I indicated that we submitted revised plans. And most importantly, the plans were revised to, as to provide that the air conditioning units were all going to be relocated from the grade into the roof. We provided board on board fence details. We provided garage door opening warning system details. We revised the plans to put bumper blocks in the parking areas. Plan has been revised so as to provide roof leaders and recharge inlet to be connected to an existing inlet. And landscaping has been added to the plans within the city's right of way. And fence details were submitted. And Madam Chair, unless you or the Board have any questions in terms of how I would like to proceed, it's after we enter into the revised plans into the record. Is, I'll have Walt Hopkin, who I see at least on the line, who will zoom in and explain the engineering changes. I will then have Rich Arzberger, our architect, explain the architectural changes. And then my summation, unless you all have questions or comments or anything else.
Yes, I think that we should go through the planners and the engineers' documents as to what was modified to make sure that it does agree to what was requested. And if it's not here, what the issue is. Because I have noticed in some of the planning reports that some of the items that we requested are not there. So let's just go through them and let's, let's figure it out.
Very good, thank you. Arina, did you want me to mark into the records, the evidence, the new plans?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy, we'll just mark them as we go. So we're just confirming, we stopped at A4 last time, correct?
I think we had, my notes had us going up to A8. And I think that's what we said the other day on the phone, but maybe I.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're correct, A8.
Okay. So, oh, there's Walter. Can I, well, why don't we swear on Walter and I'll have his plans marked in?
Sure, let's, let me get my Board Engineer and Planner sworn so that in case there's some discussion there. Please raise your right hands, Michael and Jason. Do you solemnly swear, testimony about to given this matter with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the Board.
Michael Sullivan, Clark Cadenhead, Board Planner.
Thank you.
Mr. Board Engineer.
Okay. Walter, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear, testimony about to given this matter with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
State your name for the record and your affiliation with the applicant. No need to go through through your credentials, we have already done that.
Thank you, Walter Hopkin, H.O.P.K.I.N. I'm the Civil Engineer for the project.
And Mr. Hopkin, just for the record, I think last time you testified that you are a planner as well, correct?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. So Walter, I'd like to have you just, we'll mark into the record your revised plans. Can you just, my notes reflect that there are revised site plans prepared by your office last revised April 30th, 2021, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and Arina, we'll mark that as A.
A9.
A9, thank you. All right, Walter, you heard my introduction and why don't you just explain to the Board what changes have been made?
Yes, with the.
And I'm sorry, and if you could also reference them to the document that we have from Insight so that we can make sure that we've got everything, everything taken care of?
Sure.
Yeah, and that letter would be from Insight dated May 12th, 2021, correct? Jason?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And why don't we mark, go ahead and mark the Insight second review letter into evidence as Exhibit B3.
Thank you.
All right, Walter, why don't you take us through the changes, engineering standpoint?
Sure, with the Board's permission, could I share my screen and refer to my plans? I think you're at A8, but whatever those, the exhibit number is, the, our, our April 30th plans.
Yes, please, Mr. Hopkin, go ahead, and it's A9. This will, this will be marked into evidence as Exhibit A9.
Okay. Can the Board see my plans?
Yes.
Great. So, Mr. Kennedy did a good job of summarizing our revisions. I'll briefly show it to the Board. We did add bumper blocks along all parking spaces which meet a wall. The air conditioners were moved. They were shown on this plan at the ground level, they've been moved to the, to the roofs. There was also a transformer pad in the rear of the site that in preliminary discussions with the architect, we believed were necessary. But as these plans have moved forward and developed, the MEP consultant indicated that it wasn't required. So that transformer at the rear of the property has been taken off the plans and removed. We just graphically showed the fence and kind of, in order to be consistent, refer to the architectural plans for detail of that. Just for consistency. If I could, I'll switch over to same set of plans, but a different sheet. There was some discussion at the last meeting about tying in the roof leaders. Again, with the architect, we've, we've discussed having what was previously roof leaders directed toward the rear of the property will be redirected inside the building towards the front. They'll be captured by a header system and piped out to an existing inlet on Seventh Avenue. There is a, there is a, an inlet within the parking area that really isn't expected to receive much runoff because it is covered. However, in accordance with Insights' recommendation, we've tied that in as well. We have, we reached out to Mr. Sullivan's office and requested some suggestions with regard to additional landscaping along Seventh Avenue. We've provided that. We've added some shrubs, a few trees and some ornamental grasses. There are some suggestions in Mr. Sullivan's letter with regard to substitution of species, which we of course would comply with. We did, and I don't know if this will go into the architect, but it is in the engineer's letter. We did clarify that there's a section of the city's ordinance with regard to refuse and recycling as far as the area required. And, and by our calculations, I believe it's 12 square feet per unit. And the area that's designated does comply with that. We did clarify with the, with the owner that in the homeowners, the applicant with the homeowners association documents, any bulk items will have to be disposed of individually by those specific homeowners. So the union owners will have to get rid of any bulk items required so they won't, they won't take up the, the refuse area. Just a couple of housekeeping items, I'm not sure that this was brought up in, in the last meeting, but it is, I believe, in Insights' letter. We do have Seoul Conservation District approval. We, we have their certification for that, for his clarification. We also do have a letter from Monmouth County, a letter of no interest. There was also CAFRA referenced in their plans and it's our opinion and I believe Mr. Fister's office would, would concur that this below, this project below, excuse me, this project falls below the threshold for CAFRA permit. And it also falls below the threshold of a water permit from NJDEP. There was some reference about handicap space. The handicap space, we have confirmed that that is ADA compliant. And any clarifications that our plans would need to demonstrate that, we would certainly provide. There was also some leftover comments, and I don't know if we were, were clear at the last meeting, but during initial discussions, there was some discussion about stackers in order to provide additional parking. My understanding that those are no longer under consideration for, for a variety of reasons, but there would be no stackers proposed with this application. I think that's it as far as the, the plans, revisions with regard to the engineering plans. I have reviewed Mr. Fister's letter. I believe that I've discussed anything he's asked us to, if not, to be happy to. And any technical items left in his letter, we would agree to as a condition of approval. I've also reviewed Mr. Sullivan's letter, same thing there. If, if I haven't touched on any of his comments that should be directed at an engineer, I'd certainly be happy to. And again, any technical comments in his letter, we would agree to comply with as a matter of the condition of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkin, do you have anything else to add at this point?
No, just any, any, any questions or comments from the Board or as professionals?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I defer to you.
Um, I, from, Jason, I see that there is, in your letter, there's a number of areas having to do with lighting. I'm, I, we didn't discuss lighting at all in this presentation. Is someone else going to do that?
Yes.
That wasn't, that wasn't to Jason, that was to Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, we will have our architect testify to that.
To lighting?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Uh, Jason, is there anything that was not covered that you feel that, that needs to be brought up here from an engineering standpoint outside of lighting?
I made, I highlighted my letter before, before the meeting tonight and I think Walt covered just about everything. There are a couple of things stormwater related, which I don't really think need to be discussed here. More technical cleanup type stuff to comply with the city that I don't think is going to be any issue for the applicant, it's just a matter of complying. So if the Board saw fit to approve, I'd be comfortable working that out with the engineer as a condition of approval.
All right, so that, that would be more specifically 26E?
26E, that's correct.
Page 5, 26E. So you're comfortable with having that discussion and the applicant will comply, correct?
I'm comfortable if the applicant's comfortable.
We are.
Okay, okay.
That's it, that's, that's all I had. Everything else Walt addressed in his direct.
Uh, there was a, there's a, a mention about the screening for the electronic, electrical transformer. Is that someone else going to speak to that, that's our line item 32?
I think the applicant testified that they've eliminated the transformer from the project. But that's highlighted as well.
Okay.
I just had a quick question, follow-up question for Jason, this is Alexis Taylor. Um, so we heard that, and, and you concur that this falls below the threshold for a water permit from NJDEP. I assume that that's a stormwater permit?
I, I think he was talking about the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water.
Okay, understood. I guess then I could ask for a clarification from the engineer.
About, oh, sorry, yeah.
That, that's correct, Mr. Fitch is correct. I'm sorry for the ambiguity in my comment, but yes, it's New Jersey DEP Bureau of Safe Water Drinking. We would simply get an approved and a permit from New Jersey American, the local purveyor.
Understood, thank you.
Um, there was also a, a mention about fencing. And I see that in CCH's report that, that there was a, there was a suggestion of something else as opposed to board on board, is that right, Mr. Sullivan? That's on.
That's, that's, that is, that is correct. And I don't, I, I don't know whether the architect was going to address that or, because it's really more tied into architecture.
Okay.
But if, if Mr. Hopkins wants to deal with it, he's welcome to.
Do you want to wait for the architect to speak about that, or you want to speak to that, Mr. Hopkins?
I prefer the architect because it's their, it's their detail. I wanted to be consistent and from an engineering standpoint, it's very simple. From an aesthetic standpoint, it's, you know, it's more in their, their court.
Okay.
From a.
Go ahead, Michael.
I just, this is Michael Sullivan. I just wanted to follow up on the planting design and the landscape architectural design. The applicant has revised the plans consistent with recommendations over our office to include some smaller scale, small trees and additional shrubs and ground cover. And, and we've asked them to use native caracid species rather than ornamental species which can grow in the shade and are native and should do well. But from the standpoint of the requirement to show the, the city redevelopment plan, streetscape improvements, they've included a very small conceptual detail of that on the plan. They do not detail it fully here. And it really is, it, it's a suggestion or an acknowledgement that at some point in the future, they will install or will be installed here. But having them do detailing and figuring it all out at this stage may not be the best, best thing. So it was one of those issues that was left open at the last meeting with respect to the detailing of that. And so if the Board is satisfied with the conceptual plan that they've included, which is really just an excerpt from the redevelopment plan, then, then they would be fully satisfied, the, in my mind, the landscape architectural aspects of the, of the project. If I could just piggyback onto that, one of the technical stormwater items I'd like to work out with the applicant, and again, we don't have to do it here, is coordinating the location of the pipes and structures relative to where that future improvement will be. So there should be a little bit more detail on the plan. Again, it's, I don't think it's going to affect the review that's being done right now with the Board, it's more technical, just to confirm locations, but I just figured after Michael said that, I should make mention. And so Jason, to that end, would it be effective to have an alternative front yard plan that shows that future? So that those utilities could be put on there, is that what's required for that? You know, all I really want to see is how the utilities, the stormwater in particular, is going to dovetail with the, the future right of way improvements. In terms of the sidewalks and the landscape and whatnot, it will change, but I think that's part of the, the public infrastructure improvement plan. So I don't necessarily need to see all that. You may, or the Board may like to, but for the technical side of it, I, I don't necessarily need to see that. I, I, I don't need to see it from my perspective at this point because I know will be adapted, whatever the streetscape infrastructure installation is, will be adapted to the existing infrastructure that's built now for this project.
Um, I also see that there's another, there's another area where we're talking about utilities that the, the architectural plan should be revised to illustrate the appearance of mid-meters. Will that be, is that engineering or is that, we're going back to architect?
Uh, that would be the architect.
Okey-dokey. Does the Board have any additional questions for Mr. Hopkin? Anyone from Board? Okay. Uh, can we open up a public question on what was presented in these last few minutes, please?
Sure, I show one hand raised, Mr. Magnoli, go ahead and speak.
Oh, yeah, Ernest Magnoli, 7th and Northeast 7th Street, Pointe Beach, Florida, 183 First Avenue, Asbury and 583 Cedar Avenue, West Long Branch.
So, excuse me, you're garbled, what was the, the address in Asbury? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Excuse me?
I couldn't hear the address that you mentioned in Asbury Park.
Well, you heard my Florida address, right?
No, I, you please repeat the address that you mentioned in Asbury Park. I couldn't hear it, it was garbled.
183 First Avenue.
Thank you, proceed.
Mr. Serpico.
Yes.
Mr. Serpico, before we go, it's John Moore.
Yes.
Everybody knows the 100 blocks in the entire beachfront, was he saying 183? It's the blocks between Ocean Avenue and Kingsley Avenue. That would be the back end of the Stone Pony or the front end of the Empress. And there are no residents there, so I mean, that, that is an illegal address.
Well, it's, it's the, it's the life storage address, what is that on? Isn't that 183?
The what?
You heard me.
You don't know where.
No, I didn't hear you, I wouldn't ask you if I heard you.
Listen, where are we going with this, Mayor?
You answer my questions or, Nick, there's your first warning, okay? You answer my questions, you don't answer my questions, you're going to be muted, you've been warned. Answer the questions. You said something about storage, I, I couldn't, I couldn't understand what you were saying.
Okay, it's Moore again. Is the storage address for clothes and furniture and everything a legitimate address as per these hearings?
No. And there's no storage at 183 First Avenue. That's why I'm trying to get a clarification.
Well, he's going to say 813.
Life storage has very close.
But again, a storage address to me is not a legitimate address.
It's not.
I could be wrong, I apologize.
That's storage for personal property. The legitimate address is your Pointe Beach address.
Oh, really? And how about my West Long Branch address with my clothing and the rental?
What's over in West Long Branch? What's there?
So what does that mean? I don't have to live in Asbury?
Answer, okay, you know what? I already warned you.
Go ahead, mute me, I sent this to the.
Mute him, mute him. I'm not arguing with him this evening. He either answers the questions or I'm done with him.
All right, do we have any other, any hand, other hands raised?
No, we do not have any other hands raised, please continue.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, you're next.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I'd like to recall Rich Arzberger, Architect.
Okay, sir, where are you? I see, please raise your right hand. Okay.
All right, Rich, just give your name and raise your right hand.
Richard Arzberger, A-R-Z-B-E-R-G-E-R.
Okay, please raise your right hand, you solemnly swear, the testimony about to given this matter with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please state your affiliation with the applicant. There's no need to go through, your professional credentials have already done that. He's the architect, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm the architect.
Okay.
It's sworn. Um, so Rich, just before I begin, let's mark, Arina, we are up to A. I want to revise, mark these revised plans in, so this would be A10, correct?
Correct, A10.
All right, uh, the, your revised plans that you prepared, Rich, were prepared by your office and what was the revision date?
April 30th, 2021.
Okay, and that's. Okay, and that's been submitted, so Madam Chair, I would like to mark that as A10 with your consent.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, Rich, just for the record, why don't you, just like Walt did, please describe the engineering changes, and then there was some specific information regarding lighting.
Okay. The extent of the changes that were covered in the recent submission included changes to architectural sheets A1 and A4, reflecting that the air-conditioning condensing units have been relocated from the side yard at grade to the rooftop. We've also provided fixture cuts of the proposed condensing units which will serve the building. Number two, well, skip number two, is the ground floor lighting plan, which we'll get into afterwards. Item number three is that the plans elevations and renderings have been revised to reflect a board-on-board fence, which will be staying to match the exterior of the building, and a detail was provided on sheets A1 and A4 illustrating the construction of that board-on-board fence. Number four, also on sheets A1 and A4, and the front rendering, there's been a revision to include a garage door opening morning system, and product literature regarding that morning system was also provided as part of the submission. In addition, additional information was requested regarding the balcony cable rail system. That fixture cuts of that have likewise been submitted, and information regarding the sun shading product or the trellis that was on the rooftop has also been provided. There was one modification to the floor plan itself. Originally, we had indicated that a typical upper floor plan was identical for the second, third, and fourth floors. As such, there was a rear line delineation for the terrace area, which applied only to the second floor and not to the third and fourth floor. So we've added to the plans an additional floor plan representing the exact layout of the third and fourth floor plan. That relocation of that rear extent of the rear terrace is the only difference in plan between the second floor and the third and fourth floor plans. In addition, we've provided a revised ground floor lighting plan on sheet E1, and it's been recalculated to account for the proposed board-on-board fence. And the lighting levels indicated on that plan are zero foot candles on the neighboring properties. Also, we provided additional light fixture product literature to amend to that revised plan. That was the extent of the architectural submissions that were provided.
And do you have any more information about the lights that you want to go through, the review memorandum, Jason?
Our guests answer questions. I don't.
Okay. Madam Chair, do the board members have any questions?
Well, we have, from section 14 through, yeah, section 14 on Insight's letter has a number of things around lighting that we should discuss, or if you'd like to reply. And I believe that CCH also has a number of lighting items that should be addressed.
Sure. So, Rich, why don't you, let's go through, starting with item 14.
Yes.
And for the record, this is from the letter of May 12, 21.
Correct, for Insight, yes.
Correct.
Okay. Item 14 indicates that revised lighting calculations were provided by our office. Testimony shall be provided as to how light spillage was reduced to the neighboring properties. Was the fence model as part of the analysis? Additionally, the lighting levels shown on the ground floor plan on sheet E1 shall be extended to full length of the property. Essentially, what we're saying is that by adding the fence to that analysis, all foot candle levels beyond the property boundaries of this property have been reduced to zero. Item B, any kind of spillage from the terraces above to the ground level. The foot candle levels, as a result of lights located on the terraces, have virtually no impact on the foot candle levels at grade. Item number C, will there be any spillage beyond the limits of the roof line? Likewise, any light spillage that would occur as a result of lighting on this rooftop would have no effect on the foot candle levels at grade. I think item four, that concludes item 14. There's only three items, four items really on that list.
And Jason, are you in agreement with what was testified? Are you satisfied?
Yeah, I mean, the lighting plan itself doesn't show that, but what I see on the lighting plan is consistent with what he's saying. So if they've analyzed it that way with the fence and we're getting zero at the property line, then I'm good. Question I do have, though, is on the bottom left, so that'd be the southwest corner of the property. We do have some spillage there, so I was wondering if we could get some testimony on that.
On the left, over here?
Yes.
Oh, in the back?
That's in the back. I think it's the southwest corner of the building.
Southwest, okay. There's indicated in the public right-of-way a foot candle level of .1, which would be negligible in the right-of-way. In fact...
You know what? I apologize. I'm turned around. You're right. Yep, I'm good.
Yeah, so that will be in the public right-of-way. I would assume that you have street lighting, which would exceed that about.
So that's the northeast corner of the building. I got turned around. My fault. We're good.
Okay. And then we have the CCH report. I'm not sure if we actually put a number to that, though it was the revised plan. Irene, I'm not sure if we did for May 13th.
No, we, let's mark that into evidenced as Exhibit B4.
Correct, okay. Yeah, that's from CCH, pardon me, dated September 14, 20, last revised, May 13, 21.
Right. And Mr. Sullivan, I was questioning the ones on 4.4, the section 4.4. I wanted to make sure that you are in agreement, that we are good there, even though, or if we're not, please let us know.
Well, it's a little bit of both, and I appreciate the testimony tonight because it reflects what we're seeing on this. The question about the rooftop canopy, is it solid or is it a pergola-style design when it's called a canopy? And if, how are the lights going to be hung from that?
It's a pergola style. I believe we're calling out for recessed lighting within the pergola.
Within the pergola?
Yes.
Okay. And that area, which has, on the rooftop, has the only lights that are above people's heads, is really blocked and shielded by the architectural, the vertical circulation elements of the building. So while that's the hottest spot, it's furthest from the edges, and I don't see any spillage from the roof. The next comment, so B, on page 11 of our report, talks about the color temperature. You specified everything as 4,000 K, and the board is trying to warm these lights up, and we've suggested 3,000 K as a maximum.
I believe we've specified that, but if you want to have a substitute, 3,000 or the 4,000 would be in agreement.
Okay. The details. Okay, so the only other question is that up on the penthouse level, which is pretty far above the street level and the adjacent, the lights are not shielded. They're not mounted in the ceiling. They're not mounted in a wall facing, and they're facing outward. So can you provide some testimony as to what the perception would be of those lights from adjacent properties or the public street with those bar lights that are on the walls?
The bar lights are located on the interior side of the parapet wall, so they would shine across the floor of the rooftop deck.
I'm sorry. I think you missed, I understand how those work on the rooftop deck, but on the penthouse level, they are shown facing outwards in the walls towards the adjacent properties and to the public street right-of-way and to the rear.
On sheets E2, we show photometrics of each of the respective decks, and those are the foot candle levels at that level on the surface of the terrace. So of course, since foot candle levels are a function of distance, by the time they reach grade, they would be significantly less than that.
I totally understand that. What I'm saying is you have lights that are facing outward from the building. I'm not concerned about the brightness at ground level that gets there, but what are these lights going to look like if they are unshielded? I don't know how they're shielded. Do they have louvers so that people don't see them?
They'd just be standard can downlights.
No, I'm talking about the penthouse level. The same lights that are on the roof deck that face in face out on the penthouse level. You don't have, and you don't have a parapet there to screen them. So I'm asking, what is the impact, what would be the perceived impact of those lights on adjacent properties?
Well, I'm looking at the photometrics that are indicated on the plan, and by the time they get to the guardrail, there are less than one foot candle pretty much around the perimeter of the building at that surface level.
Yeah, I understand what the foot candles show at the surface of the terrace. What I'm asking is what is the perception of the light fixture itself when it is on at night from the adjacent properties? What would somebody perceive from there? Not what it lights up, but are they going to see a bright, you know, white band that goes along there or bright white bar? If I was in adjacent, let's say there was a building next to me, and I was at the same level, and I'm outside on my terrace, what would I see? Would I see these bright white lights facing out?
Those don't, they're faced down. Yeah, we provided a fixture cut for those lighting. And it's shown as the, on the first page, it's shown as a quadra fixture by Insight Lighting. It's aluminum housing. And it says 6 to 12 watt light source.
Okay.
It's relatively dim. The lens has a clear tempered glass. So it's a subtle low-level lighting that primarily is intended to light the floor area of the terrace. It's only, well, it's only 6 or 12 watts.
Okay, so what would a 6 to 12 watt light look like if I give the board something to compare it to?
A standard light bulb is 60 watts, that you would have in your residence and screwed into a lamp, would be about 60 watts. So 12 watts is relatively low compared to a single 60-watt light bulb.
Okay.
So is it shielded or it's not shielded at all?
It's within a housing. If you take a look at the fixture cut that we provided, it's a rectangular fixture made of aluminum, which has a clear glass rectangular lens fixtures. The lens itself is only one and a half inches high by roughly, well, depending on which model number, 20, probably 28 to 40 inches long with a 12-watt light source.
So if I'm standing on my deck, right next door to this deck, will I see it? Will I see the bulb?
Of course, just like you would see the insides of the building, light coming from the rooms at height, probably even dimmer than that.
What is, Miss, what is the mounting height of those lights exactly?
We were proposed to put them at the same mounting height as the ones that are on the parapet, and I'd be inclined to say we'd probably mount them effectively. I'm looking for the manufacturer's suggested mounting height. I would say probably two to three feet above the floor of the terrace.
Have your questions been answered, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, you know, these are very, these are fairly low-level lights. They will be perceived, but I think that the distances between the penthouse level and the street level aren't going to have any impact based on what he's talked about on the public right-of-way. And it's, you know, the housing, I'm looking at the details now. It's a clear glass, it's a clear glass, so there's no real filter on it. There's no louvers or anything like that, but it is very soft in terms of its water. So I think the impact would be minimal based on what he's talking about, so.
Does that take care of all the questions you had about lighting? Because I see that there were a number of things in the report.
Yes, yeah, that was the last thing. We talked about the color temperature was important. The, he's testified to the spillage, and that's the extent of the lighting comments we have.
All right, do you have any other testimony for regarding this topic, Mr. Kennedy?
I do not, Chair.
I have one question for the architect, if I may. Rich, now that the AC units are being put on the roof, are you able to discuss, to discuss how they may or may not be visible from the street?
Yes, we originally had some condensing units on the roof. I believe my testimony at that point was that the height of those condensing units would be concealed by the height of the parapet. The condensing units at most is about 30 inches tall. They're residential size condensing units, so they wouldn't be visible from the street.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from our professionals?
I'm good.
On the architect?
The only other question that we would, I think is out there is the recommendation to go to a horizontal board, closed board fence to match the architectural detailing on the facade.
There was some concern with respect to that on the part of the owner in that a horizontal configuration would provide a ladder-climbing type effect. So for security purposes, we would prefer to go with the vertical configuration for the board-on-board fence.
So I guess the fences that I'm familiar with that have horizontal boards that are closed, so there's no spaces, nobody can climb those. I don't understand the security concern.
The board-on-board typically has a top, when it says standard configuration vertical, has a horizontal rail at the top and the bottom, and then the boards are alternate, on alternate sides, each board is alternate side of each of those rails. So if you return it sideways, you could put your foot on one of the boards on one side, and there'd be like whatever the width of the board is, say five inches, between the top of one board and the bottom of the other. That would provide a foothold for someone who wanted to easily climb that fence.
Yeah, I think you're missing my point. My point is that there wouldn't be any room to put your feet in. If you had a horizontal board, closed board fence, those boards would be stacked tight on top of each other, and they would not have any foothold. There would not be any foothold on there. The rails would be on the inside.
No, we're not proposing a stockade-type fence. We're proposing a board-on-board where it alternates on either side. So if you take a look at the detail provided on sheet A1, you'll see.
I think, I'm sorry, we cut you off.
I know exactly what you're proposing. You're proposing a board-on-board fence. I know what a board-on-board fence is, okay? I think everybody knows what a board-on-board fence is. What I'm suggesting is a more architecturally consistent approach will be to have a horizontal board fence. It was not shadow boxed or board-on-board. It would be boards stacked on top of each. of each other. So there'd be no gaps between those boards on the outside and the rails and the posts that support it would be on the inside.
The, the concern there is, uh, what, once you eliminated that board on board configuration, which would allow wind to go through the fence. Now by putting all, making a solid surface on one side, it creates like a sail which could possibly be affected by higher winds, which you would find, uh, at, at some point times of year at this location. So.
Listen, I, I, from an architectural perspective, we thought it was a good idea to make the site more consistent with the building, at least as it seen from the street. Um, uh, and I'll leave it to the board. I think if, if the board decided that they wanted you to go that way, there's, there's probably a way to structurally make it so that it's not a sail. Um, but, uh, I, I've put that out there as a suggestion and, um, I hear what you're saying.
I, I just have a clarifying question. So I'm confused because the, you're saying it acts like a sail, but the vertical fence does have gapping in it so that it lets air through?
Yes. It's done in a more alternating board on board path. And that's what we're proposing.
Okay. Uh, does the board have any other questions of the architect? No more for the professionals? No more from the board? Okay. Let's, uh, open it up to the public.
I don't show any hands raised at this moment. Please continue.
Okay. All right. Your next witness.
Madam Chair, I have no further witnesses. I have a, uh, two minute and 20 second summation line. Uh, you're ready.
All right, just, uh, one second.
And I know it's two minutes and 20 seconds because I made my assistant listen to it.
All right, go ahead.
All right. Well, very, very briefly, this is, this process has been a very, uh, long process for a lot of expected and unexpected reasons. Obviously we had the pandemic and we have the complications with the subsequent developer agreement and the intricacies of that and the revisions to that and just the, the general development process. It's been a labor of love. Uh, we're here. We appreciate the hard work that you all have given, uh, to all aspects of this proposal. Having appeared before you on a number of occasions, I'm not surprised by that at all, but I appreciate the detailed review, starting with technical review committee meeting number one, technical review committee number two, and all three planning board meetings. I respectfully submit that what we started with, we thought was a great application, and I believe this process has made it even greater. And I appreciate the time that, uh, Michael in his office and Jason in his office have given. And also before I forget, I'm going off screen here, I want to thank Irina. She's been a wonderful coordinator throughout this whole thing and she's been always very pleasant. So I appreciate that. But we had extensive testimony regarding this project and, and there's a lot of people we have to, uh, you know, review this matter with between the city council and the I-STAR and the, and the planning board. So we, uh, appreciate the time and effort. Asbury, the city of Asbury Park is an absolute jewel. We want to continue to be a part of that jewel. We believe this project will be and can be part of that jewel. Pat Tesano, uh, testified extensively. He's a experienced developer with a proven successful track record. And he was instrumental in this process. I find it very significant, um, that he testified he's going to live here. So he knows what it takes to make, uh, to build a building. He knows what it takes to run a building and he knows what it takes to properly maintain a building. I would like to think that after all this time, we've addressed all your legitimate and heartfelt concerns. Perhaps there are some aspects or some finer points that, uh, one or two or three of you may or may not totally agree with, but, um, in this, uh, in a big, big project like this, when there's a million large and small details, um, I would be shocked if there wasn't some minor disagreements on some of the finer points. But overall, I believe, and I hope you agree, that we have, um, overwhelmingly and substantially complied with, uh, the majority of the subsequent developer agreement concerns and obligations, so redevelopment concerns and obligations. Um, Pat Tesano's design and vision, your all design vision, and it's the, this overall project that we present tonight, which in many respects has been shaped by your comments and concerns as well as those of the city and the I-STAR, um, we're presenting that tonight. If we were to obtain this approval tonight, and we hope we are, uh, we still have a lot to do. Uh, the building process is not easy in this economy, uh, but tonight's approval would, from you, would be a very, very important cog in this, uh, development process. And against that backdrop, Madam Chair, I thank you for the time and I respectfully request your vote of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have a moment to, uh, does the, uh, do we have any public comment? At this point?
Yes, we have one hand raised and Mr. Magnoli, one moment please while I get the timer up. And you can go ahead and state your name, your address, and Mr. Serpico will swear you in. Please wait for the timer to start.
Bernice Magnoli, 710 Northeast, 7th Street, Pointon Beach, Florida.
Mr. Magnoli, please raise your right hand.
It's raised.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go right ahead.
Uh, so I, I've lived in this area, uh, the sand tender and, uh, I stayed for about a year across the street from this property at the Asbury Inn. And, uh, and I'm familiar with all the projects and developments going around. Let's say within, uh, I don't know, a thousand feet of this project. So there's, there's some things that, that concern me and, and let me say what they are. First of all, it's a five story building with a rooftop with penthouses and a active rooftop deck. It's near and across the street from a building called North Beach that's having a lot of issues with things being approved and built that are blocking views of first, second, third, and this could block up to the fourth floor, Westerly View and, and, uh, et cetera. So, so, so my point is, I, I don't, I don't, my comment is I don't understand why with a 200 foot notice, how this so much impacts the neighborhood is so different from anything there, the way it looks, that how all, all the people there just don't call in? They don't say anything. Uh, I, I don't get what's going on in Asbury. And it seems to be project after project, the developers and the board seem to have a way where they work together and get these things done, no matter what they are. And only a few big mouths like me call in, uh, because again, I'm hoping to move back, uh, not as a full time, but as a part time by property. And, you know, more and more, there's no areas that everything's going to be blocked. The view, the air, everything with rooftop parties and, and, and that's it. It seems like it's, uh, the developers' uh, city now. They get what they want. And then when anybody from the public calls in
One minute.
that doesn't want it. When anybody from the public calls in that doesn't want it, you know, it's rough with the board and with, with, with other people, you know, uh, it, it's tough. And even, uh, the developers have things to say on Facebook and, and even at the meetings that are, you know, character assassination, their opinions, but look, the way I look at it now, the developers are going to own everything in the city, especially west of Grand Avenue. They're going to build what they want, how they want. And you look at that Asper, Asbury, uh, uh, hotel, the, the Ocean Club, no matter what city you're in, you see that big thing blocking out the air, the sun, the moon of everybody and surrounding towns, et cetera. But that's where we're headed. And I don't agree with it, but that's where we're headed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Magnoli. At this time, I don't show any other hands raised.
I, uh, motion to close public, uh, comment.
Need a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
I think the public comment closed.
Yes. Can we have any?
Any, anyone opposed? Hearing none, eyes have it.
Uh, any, uh, any comments from the board members? That they'd like to bring up? Any discussion?
I would just like to, um, add, are we on to the conditions of the resolution or is that coming later?
No, that's, that's part of this, that's part of the comment.
Okay, great. So, um, I heard as a condition of the resolution, and Jack probably did too, um, that, uh, we would like Insight to review the storm water inlet in relation to the streetscape improvements. I defer to Jason on how to phrase that, but I would just like to make sure that that makes that into the resolution.
Yeah. Yeah. Jason, if I can help out, and you tell me if this will work for you. My language is, uh, compliance with the outstanding issues. All testimony that's been, uh, given is made part of the record. So whatever was stated that they would do is, is, has to be, uh, complied with. Secondly, that I would reference the outstanding recommendations and conditions set forth in Jason's report last revised on such and such. And typically Jason will tell me if there's anything more specific that he needs. Now, Jason, if you want some specific condition relating to that item, I can draft it for you or you, you, you tell me how you want to handle it, the way Alexis suggested, which way is easiest and best for you.
Um, how about, uh, halfway more specific comment, uh, something to the effect of applicant to work with board engineer in relation to, uh, proposed stormwater infrastructure within the city right of way?
Um, how about if I put that applicant will submit, uh, plan, amend, plans for that subject to your review and approval?
That works.
Plan amendments.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other, uh, comments that they would like to say before I say mine? No? Okay. Um, I'd like to, uh, I, I know that there was a mention that we were looking to, for the lighting to go back to 3,000 Kelvin. I don't remember seeing that anywhere.
Madam Chair, subject to Michael helping me to structure it properly, but I have the lighting 3,000 K.
Yep.
That down from 4,000 K. Speak to Michael.
Yes. And, uh, also that I, I'm assuming that within, uh, the report from Insight, there was one of the last items had to do with emergency vehicles. I'm assuming that you guys will work that through, uh, and being able to them and getting the approval from the, uh, uh, city fire official as we always do. Um, I know we didn't cover that at all, but I would assume that that would happen. Um, one other item that I'd like to bring up, and I need the opinion of the board on this, uh, having to do with the horizontal closed board stacked fencing. Um, I would like to add that to be more in character with the architecture of the building. Uh, if anyone feels differently about that, I'm willing to have that discussion.
No. So this is, um, Alexis, I would say that that should also, uh, similarly be subject to review by the board planner.
And Madam Chair, if it, if I may, we would work with the, with the board planner on that.
Yes, we would, uh, I would like that to happen. Uh, there were two items that, um, we also needed added that we did not discuss having to do with the meters on the building. I don't believe that they are on any plan. So we need that to be added. That is item 4.6 on the CCH report.
No problem. If they're not there, we will add them. Absolutely.
Okay. That's what was requested. And then obviously the plan should change to the kind of fencing that we're talking about also. Uh, and that's all I have. I don't know if anybody else has anything else.
No, I always put in, there's a litany of, of, uh, conditions with every waterfront redevelopment area project. Talks about continued compliance with CAFRA permits and so on and so forth. So the standards, five or six of those will be in this, um, resolution as usual.
That's understood.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, any other comments from any board members? Okay. Can I get a, uh, a motion to, to approve this application, uh, with the contingencies that we discussed?
So move Mike Manzella.
Second.
Second more.
Ladies first. So I'll take a motion by Mike Manzella and a second by Yvonne Clayton. I will now take role. Mayor John Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Did we lose her?
Oh, I think I don't see her.
Okay.
Okay. Shall we move on, Jeff?
Uh, is that, I only counted five votes or so, weren't there?
Yeah, we didn't finish.
We didn't finish.
We, we have, uh, seven members.
Right, but I didn't vote yet.
Right.
No, I don't think we voted.
So let's just continue and.
Continue on.
Thank you. Uh, Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallapo?
No.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Kozak?
Yes.
So we have seven affirmative votes, one negative vote for Mr. Gallapo, and Jen Souter is no longer with the, uh, meeting.
Oh, just a second. I just got a text that Jen is on the, on the phone, but she can't unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, hold on.
He may end up.
I think, I, I have one person in the, in the attendees on the phone. Let me see, let me see if it's her.
Okay.
She has been here the entire duration. I can attest to that. Uh, Jen, is that you? Go ahead and unmute if your phone number is ending in 602. Jennifer, is, is, is that you ending in 602?
Yes, 602 is her and she says that she can't seem to answer. And she says, yes, it's her. 602 is her. Can you unmute her in any way or?
No, all I can do is ask her to unmute herself.
She's.
You know what? Hold on. Let me try, let me try something else.
Okay. Oh, I see that's unmuted. Is that you, Jen? Nope.
Um, let's see if I could. Uh, no, I can't, I can't promote her. I thought I could, but I cannot. All right. Jen, is there any way that you can hop on another device or try calling in with a phone?
Yeah, she's going to try.
Okay, great. Thank you everyone for your patience while we, um, fix this kink.
She says that she was wanting, been on the whole time.
Thank you.
Yes, I can confirm that she has been on the whole time with that phone number.
We're good. We're good. And if she cannot get any type of outwardly verbal communication to us, if she could text you, Irina, and have her put her vote through you and put it on the record, I would accept that.
Okay, very well.
I don't think anybody's disputing that she has listened to the entire, uh, he, both hearings or all the hearings and that, uh, you, you have, you have a record if anybody ever questioned it, that she actually texted you an affirmative or a negative vote.
We can also have her, I can also have her email me so we can have a written record.
Send an email confirmation to you and then we'll have it in the file.
Okay.
And she also is texting to me.
Okay, yeah. So if she texted you, Irina, you can let us know and then just have her send us an email.
Okay, she's back. All right. How, let's try this. Jen?
She says her vote is yes. Let me try one more time.
Okay.
I'll accept the chairwoman's representation that she received a yes vote from Jen Souter. I, I believe you. And tomorrow when your computer is back up online, she can send Irina and copy me or, and everyone with a, yes, that. or, and everyone with a, yes, that was me and yes, I voted yes.
All right, sounds good.
Souter's efforts.
Sounds good. So we have eight affirmative votes and one, um, one no vote.
Negative, okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and congratulations.
Thank you, Kevin, take care.
All right, thank you.
Bye, Chair.
Can I get a, uh, a motion to adjourn? Once we see when the next meeting is.
And.
You're going to show us that, right?
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, our next, uh, regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board is Monday, June 7th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. There is also a special meeting on Thursday, June 3rd, 2021 at 6:00 PM. So I'd like to make everyone aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait a second, we have Jennifer.
Jennifer, I'm so sorry.
Oh, I got you.
I, I heard everything except that last 30 seconds. I, I just couldn't get on, it wouldn't let me unmute. I'm so sorry.
All right, we need your, we need your vote.
Yes, my vote is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, motion to adjourn.
More.
Okay, second.
Chair member's second.
All right, I'll take, I'll take a motion by, uh, Mayor Moore and a second by Jim Henry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.